Let the religion to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you. If I can ask you all to remain standing just for a moment, a moment of silence for the individual that was struck and killed by a vehicle yesterday on Forbes Street.
And also for a favorite son of East Providence, Dr. Ken Walker, who many of you know from back in the day as a teacher, coach, administrator at Central Junior High School, went on to prominence nationally. And we lost Dr. Walker about two weeks ago. So a moment of silence for both of these East Providence residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Madam Clerk, first item, please.
Approval of consent calendar.
Would anyone like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Motion to approve.
Anyone like to second that motion?
Second.
We have a motion, a motion to approve by Councilwoman Souza, seconded by Councilman Cohoon. Roll call vote, please.
Councilman Cohoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morato.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
And Council President Brito.
Aye.
Next item, please.
Public comment.
Do we have anyone here for public comment?
I believe we have a couple of people for public comment.
We do? Oh, we have their name? Okay.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Peter Nasswight. And the topic is STIP major amendment, number 11. Come on.
Please step up to the podium, sir. Thank you.
Nothing to be nervous about. All right. So my name is Peter Nasswa. I'm resident of Ward Four, Councilperson Morato's.
There we go.
Again, my name is Peter Nasswa. I live in Ward Four in Riverside. I reached out earlier to Councilperson Morato and also the Planning Department, Diane Feather, Feather at the Planning Department about the major amendment that was introduced by Rhode Island DOT, which I guess you guys discussed behind closed doors. But the gist of it is, for the members of the public who don't know about it, it's basically Rhode Island Department of Transportation is introducing an amendment. The proposal is that they take $27 million, which has been essentially put aside for transportation alternatives programs, which are focused on pedestrian cycling infrastructure. And basically what they want to do is they want to take that $27 million and put that into repair of bridges and paving. And so I'm basically here to speak on behalf of cyclists and pedestrians, people who have kids, people who don't have kids, people who run on the East Bay Bike Path, which is near and dear to my heart. And so when I reached out to, to Councilmen and to the Planning Department in hopes of kind of getting, getting an amendment or, sorry, to get something on the books to basically say, for the city council to say that the city council itself is opposed. So I was happy to hear in response that that was already in progress. And I'm not going to speak to it in depth, but I basically wanted to stand up and say thank you for that. And if there's an opportunity for someone on the city council or members of the public to speak out during the public comment period, which ends on the 28th, there's a meeting in Providence at four o'clock on the 28th. There's also one in, I believe it's in Narragansett. You can submit written comments. You can also stand up in person. If you're like me and you're not all that comfortable with speaking in public, you might want to just write a letter. You can also send letters to the, to the government, to the governor, and your state representative. So I'll just end it with that. And thank you.
Thank you. You did a fine job.
Thank you.
Next, please.
Appointments.
I want to defer this appointment. This is a mayoral appointment. So let's, you could take that right off.
Okay.
So we only have one for public comment?
Yes, that's all.
Moving right along.
Next is council members. A first annual Coyote 5K Run, Councilman Morato.
Want to take a vote on this, right?
Your mic.
Are we taking a vote on this?
Mm-hmm.
All right. So from the last meeting, we changed the route a little bit, which will require a small road closure on the side of the carousel. So now we need council approval. I believe there's someone here from the 5K. Yep, Karen. She's on the docket, right? Karen Zion.
Thank you as long as it's okay with you guys.
And Tracy Johnson, also from the carousel.
Hi. Good evening. Karen Zions. I'm the owner of Road Races and Events Incorporated. And we have been engaged our services to help out with the Coyote 5K, which takes place in, on June 15th, 2019, at 9:00 a.m. It starts at the Carousel Park in Riverside.
So as I mentioned at the last meeting, this is to benefit the carousel and try to raise funds for the train depot. We're hoping that this becomes an annual event. And in the process of doing this road race, we're trying to showcase Riverside and the carousel and bring interest to that part of East Providence that people would not normally go. And in the course of doing that, maybe they'll see some of what Riverside has to offer, you know, like the Proud Marys and Borealis and so on. So we, as I mentioned, we had to update the route. We shortened it a little bit. And if anyone has seen this route, it actually looks like a dog.
This is the map.
It wasn't by accident.
And if you look, it looks just like a dog.
It wasn't by accident.
So it kind of worked out kind of nicely.
What kind of a dog is that?
But it's a scenic, it's a scenic route. It runs along the water, good portion of it, and down the bike path, bit of it too. So it's a really scenic route. And we're looking for some really good participation.
Need a vote.
Sure. And it's been submitted, the planes again have been submitted to the police station for that closing.
No, that's fine.
What is the, what is the cost to enter this race?
It's $30. No, $25 early registration and $30 day of, correct?
I believe so.
And we're going to do, I guess, Tracy's, we can speak of the early registrations, we'll get a T-shirt, the first, I don't know what number yet, but maybe 100 or so.
Correct. The first 100 will get a T-shirt. And yes, we did submit it to the police department. Once all of the permits are received from the DOT and the DEM and the council approval, we will set up a meeting to go through what we need as far as details and signage and if any roads need to be closed. I believe it's only temporary, like a few minutes to start the race. And then everything else looks pretty clear that they can have runners on the side of the road.
Well, Councilman, if we run short of runners, I'll be more than happy to volunteer Councilman Rodrick's and Councilman Cohoon for this.
I'm running.
There you go, so.
Well, we need as many volunteers as possible, so.
Just don't forget your checkbook, Councilwoman. I make the motion with all, as long as all the permits are provided to approve this event.
So we have a motion on the floor to approve. Would anyone like to second that motion?
Second.
Okay, seconded by Councilman Rodrick's. Roll call vote, please.
Councilman Cohoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morato.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
And Council President Brito.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Boards and Commissions, Councilman Cohoon.
So I asked if we could have a discussion. Early on, I asked the clerk for a roster of our current boards, commissions, who's on them, what, if any vacancies there are, the appointment authorities that are associated with those vacancies, et cetera. That prompted another conversation that I had with clerk and with Mark Frittato, among some other people, about, okay, well, you know, are the people who are appointed to these boards and commissions still interested in being part of these boards and commission? Do these groups even meet anymore? Have these people attended, et cetera, et cetera? So what I was hoping to do was kind of kick off the cleanup of that roster, if you will, to see if maybe we can figure out a way going forward to, I guess, purge the roles from those who are no longer interested or may not even live in the city, and maybe provide an opportunity for those. I know a few folks have reached out to me and have an interest in volunteering and serving the city. So I'd like to give those people an opportunity, if we can, but certainly do it in the right, right way. So that's the intent of this item here.
So one of the things, and I'm glad that you brought this up for us as a new council to discuss, because this was something that we discussed and kind of touched upon the last council. One of the things that we attempted to work on, especially with IT, was to go through, and I know the city solicitor at that time had sent out letters to all the boards and commissions with the instruction of the council, because we wanted verification of residency within the city, because we feel like if you're going to be on a board and commission that pertains to the city, then you should be a citizen or resident of the city. And I believe there were criterias. You had to show a license or maybe a utilities bill of some nature. To my understanding, to date, not all of the boards and commissions have complied completely with that, last I checked. So I think there's some follow-up on the part of the Solicitor's Office to kind of mandate and get that, the rest of those information to, to the council, so that we can update. I know at one point, the IT department did go through and list the names of people on the boards and commissions and their, I believe it's their affected date and their end date, so that we knew when people were up for reelection or when the seat vacancy was going to be up. And then I know with the change of form of government, we did have with the charter commissions, some changes in appointments. So some who were going to be the mayors with council approval, and then some that were going to be strictly within the council. And I believe there are also added restrictions where they have to, though they are the mayor's appointments, they have to represent each of the wards. And they have to have, you know, bipartisan with, in terms of parties too. It couldn't be all staggered one party or another. It had to be a mix. So I think we did start some work on that, just to speak to what you're saying. I don't know what the follow-up, you know, so if city solicitor could follow up with some of that. I do have, I don't know, did Sam, have you provided, have you gotten some information on that already?
Yeah, we have. We've gotten some information. It also compiled a list over people who still need to be sworn in, that are on the commissions, a few other things. Yeah, so we, as of right now, there is a report that does stand and shows who is active, who's not, whose terms have expired. And they're actually, this is kind of a sample of what everybody on the council, including the mayor's office, will get. It basically is a breakdown of 25 boards and commissions. Not all boards and commissions are currently active right now. A lot of times, they haven't had any members for quite a few years. So just taking the initiative and working with the council and the mayor's office to clean it up and make it accurate. And yeah, so that's, that's kind of our update on that one.
Because I do have a list, not so nicely put together, obviously, as this binder, but I do have a list too. So it'd be nice to compare to see where we are, because like you've mentioned, there's probably a handful of, thank you, of committees or councils that are not, have not had qualms because there haven't been enough participants or enough interest, or maybe there's no funding. So for instance, the Beautification Committee, which is years ago, was put into place to go around and plant flowers throughout the community and parks and around City Hall, and that hasn't been funded because the Department of Public Works has taken over with that responsibility. So that either goes back to that group, or we just dissolve that committee altogether.
The other, the other issue with that board was that they didn't have enough participants. And I remember that, that goes back a good, you know, three years, I would think, when they ended that board.
Well, the list has a ton of people on it, but again, you can be on a list but not want to participate. So, you know, moving forward, people who want to be on boards and commissions have to be actively participating. You know, everybody wants to be involved, but you're not, you can't just be involved in a name aspect. You have to actually do some work and participate and attend to the meetings to make a difference in the community. That's the whole point of having these volunteer or boards and commissions.
So Madam Clerk, can we all, council members, get a copy of this? These are all boards and commissions?
Absolutely.
And in addition to that, maybe we can have a moment or time that, see what boards and commissions are active and what boards or commissions are not active. And for those that are inactive, we can probably give it one more shot or just remove it in its entirety and just focus on those that we currently have. And we have people to support those boards and commissions as well.
Absolutely.
And, and that gives a list of open, open boards and commissions, open seats on these boards and commissions as well?
Yes, it does. So basically what the binder's going to have, it has the description of all the appointments, a breakdown of what type of appointment, whether it's city or mayor, or in some points, we have some governor-appointed positions as well, the term, the purpose, and also the coordinating ordinance or RAGL that is associated with that board or commission. That's what's all it is.
And are they posted as well, those boards and commissions? And availability on the city website?
They should be. They have been. I don't know.
They should be. I believe they need to be updated.
Okay.
I think a lot of these need to be updated.
So if we can look into that, updating and posting, having those posted as well?
Yeah. But this is, right, and this is the most recent for memberships and what have you. But again, making sure that everybody's sworn in and everything's done right.
Okay. Any other further discussion, Councilman?
Yeah, I mean, in the interest of kind of moving that along and understanding that that's a big job, and I don't think we want to just say, hey, you know, city solicitor, city clerk, go fix it. You know, maybe we can take a look at one board or commission per meeting, you know, focus on that one, find out what, and, and I know that I've been approached specifically about the waterfront commission. So what I was thinking about is for the next, the next meeting, I think I'm going to request an item on the docket, and perhaps we can, we can go, you know, kind of chapter and verse, who's there, who doesn't need to be there, what appoint, right, et cetera, et cetera.
And we could take one, each council person could take one board or commission for the next, at least five meetings and focus on that as well, if you would like.
Sounds fair to me.
And that way we're analyzing, at least over the next five weeks, we'll have one board or commission to review.
I'll take that action, and I'll follow up with you, Sam, for the next agenda.
Would anyone like to volunteer? While we have everyone here?
No, I agree, I agree with, we may, I mean, have we reached out to some of these boards, and we just don't know which direction to go, who to refer these people to, you know, based on this new form of government? So there's a little bit of confusion. I don't know if city solicitor can shed some light on that, but I guess that list that the clerk has pretty much specifies who gets, who appoints who for what board, so. And that list, I'm assuming, is updated, so. That answered my question in a way.
I don't have a calendar present in front of me. I mean, we can square this away right now, real quickly, and say that Councilman Cohoon has the next meeting and what they, because when we submit our docket items, we have absolutely no idea what the other council person has submitted. So, I mean, if we can just take care of this right now, because you're going to end up getting probably for the meeting after that, two people or three council members submitting it. So however way we want to go, whoever wants to be after Councilman Cohoon, we can have the next person and so forth and so on. And we could put that on the docket now, so it's already set for the next several meetings.
So the next meeting is April, March 5th?
Yep.
Okay, so March 5th. Who would like to?
So that'll be Councilman Cohoon.
Okay.
And then I'll take the 19th.
Okay.
Next one? 19, so we'll be in the one after the 19th?
April 2nd.
Four, two.
I'll volunteer for that.
Rodrick's?
And then April 16th.
And then I'll take the last one.
May 7th.
Okay. Any other further discussion on this before we proceed? Okay. You got that, Madam Clerk?
Got everything.
Next item, please.
City Sergeant, Council Vice President Rodrick.
Madam Clerk, Mr. President, to coincide with Councilman Cohoon, actually, and I thank him for bringing this, this topic up. I support him and the rest of us on that. But one of these positions, and I know that the city has received a letter, I think through the clerk's office, from, I think it was Ms. Larry Green, who had been appointed by a previous city council to city sergeant. And she was asking for clarification of, of that appointment. So again, we're in flux with a new form of government. I mean, from day one, city councils made those appointments, including city sergeant. Now, as I understand it, the, the only appointment or major appointment made by the city council is that of the city clerk. Everything else is through the mayor's office. So it puts this in flux. Does, do positions like the city sergeant just carry over automatically? In the past, none of those positions carried over. At each election time, city councils brought in city sergeant, sealer of weights and measures, all the judges, et cetera, et cetera. We're in a different situation now, whereas the city council, according to the charter commission, left just one appointment for this body, and that is that of the city clerk. So out of courtesy to the person who did ask for clarification, I put it on the agenda just to see if there's any clarification from the council tonight. I had a brief conversation with the solicitor, and it is a gray area that I think we'll have to speak to the mayor's office about or look into the charter. I have not read the new charter page by page, paragraph by paragraph, yet. I do know that it only lists the city clerk as a city council appointee. So it's on the table, just for a quick discussion, but I think what is best is that it would tie into what Councilman Cohoon has said, and that we can look into, is this going to be, is this considered a carryover? Is it going to be re-advertized? Is it going to exist at all? What direction are we going? So I just wanted to get that on the table.
Okay. Any other further discussion, Mr. City Solicitor?
So following up what the councilman has said, we are kind of tackling these as they come up. I know that there's been a tradition of a city sergeant within the city of East Providence. However, and I did not look at the old charter, but in the new charter, there's no position such listed. There's no ordinance that lists the city sergeant as an appointee of anybody. So the new charter certainly is silent as to it. So I don't even know if this position exists anymore. I would certainly take the position that if you are a holdover from the previous council with the new form of government, all those appointments, unless you had a, a set term, all those appointments are gone. So the term of the prior city sergeant would have been expired when the swearing-in of the new mayor and the new city council. The question that I have, which is really yet unanswered, is whether or not, if this council wants to go forward with such an appointment, have such a person be the city sergeant? And if so, how do we get them? Right now, I can't find any ordinance that specifies what the city sergeant's duties are, what their pay is, and who the appointing authority is. Generally speaking, the new charter places mostly appointing authority over boards and commissions with the mayor, some subject to city council approval, some not. In addition to the city clerk, I believe the zoning board is still appointed by the, by the city, city council. I believe I could be one of that, too. But generally speaking, the general principle is the mayor now has the appointing authority subject to council approval. But I will tell you from a practical, a city sergeant, like the city clerk is here to help serve the city council at the city council meetings. So you could certainly make the argument that that appointment should remain with the city council. The fact of the matter is, I just can't find anything where that position even exists in current law of the city.
So if we were to, and obviously not for tonight, but if we were to take the position of crafting an ordinance, say, to clear that up, that would be the right way to go?
That's why I would recommend doing it, so there will be no question from here and on in the future, if you, if you want to continue with that position.
Wouldn't require a charter?
No, it's a, no. Not for a position like that.
Okay. So would that be said for the next meeting, would you like to craft up an ordinance?
Not especially. No. I definitely would put it on the agenda for the next meeting, and, and if it, what I'd like to do is get council consent, not necessarily tonight, but feedback on, do we need the position? We do have police presence here that, that covers meetings and does a great job and is basically of no cost to us. So we have that in place. So I think, I don't know, Phil, I'll definitely put it on the next agenda. I don't know if it will be an ordinance per se.
What I mean by crafting, not essentially writing it up yourself, be working in conjunction with the city solicitor, having a discussion for the next meeting with the council, and then further in the discussion from that point forward.
Sure, I'll meet with the.
And I'm not sure what the protocol is with the, having a police officer present here or not. I don't know how that works out, whether they have to be here or not. So there's an area as to, and, you know, whether or not, because if, if they have to leave for one reason or another, then again, someone should be present, so.
I think from some of the research that I've done, and, you know, again, this could change depending on what the mayor's office chooses to do, is that the presence of the police person is in, already established in their workday, you know, or their work week. So it is something that's not extra. They are here, and if there's an emergency, there's people that are already out. So he's not designated anywhere other than City Hall for the duration of the meeting.
Mr. President, and Councilwoman, I, I agree, and I did a little bit of checking earlier, and I know that the, the coverage is of no cost to us. It's part of the, the schedule, right? The flex time. So it's been a great service to the, to the council and the, and the public. Professional security here. Yeah. I think also moving forward, if we're going to craft some type of ordinance, I think we should list what the powers and duties are of a city sergeant, so that there's no, there's clarification on that moving forward, whether it be this council or the next council.
Any other further discussion? Well, thank you. It's important that we address this and moving on to item number D.
Council Rules and Regulations, Council President Brito.
So at the point that we essentially finalize everything with the council rules and regulations, with the exception of public comment and communication, if I'm not mistaken. And if I am, please correct me. So I personally would like to see the communication right now, again, and I mentioned this early on, I suppose signing up for communication, I think it's a week prior to the council meeting, maybe move that up, like communications or the Monday, either the Monday before the council meeting is, just so that person will have the opportunity to review the docket
have the opportunity to review the docket item and then go on the docket or go on communications for that meeting.
So communications, it has to be public, published on the docket, correct?
Does it have to be published? It has to be.
Yeah. So as it is now, ordinance is, they're due, public, I'm sorry, the comment section of the docket, their entry is due on the Thursday prior to the docket being posted.
Communication?
Correct, correct.
Okay.
Just like any other docket items, yes.
So then, you know, so if an individual, again, wants to come up and speak with respect to what's on the docket for communication, how can we make that happen?
Public comment.
So we're switching essentially public comment to communication? And we'll just eliminate communication?
So the, so is it, I think I'm trying to understand what the, what's the difference, what you're trying to look for?
Well, right now, from what I understand, is during public comment, there is no dialogue going back and forth with the individual who's going up there to speak. Again, correct me.
Unless.
That doesn't, it's happened in the past, doesn't necessarily mean that that's the right way. But from my understanding, public comment, you come up, you speak, you say your piece or otherwise, and that's it. Communication is a, there's a dialogue.
Right.
So the only problem with communication is that you sign up for communication before you even know what's on the docket.
Right, it's a general communication to the council, right.
But you can't address the issues that are on that docket with communications.
No, just public comment. So what is the charter, I mean, you've probably said this multiple times, but what does the charter say in terms of public comment and interaction with the council?
Nothing.
Nothing, okay, so then.
This is all governed by open meeting law.
Right, so then we could, I mean, briefly have a conversation, I mean, not a debate or, you know, and we're limited too to public comments, what our length of discussion is in general, but we certainly could address an issue or have somebody address an issue that a resident or a business owner were to come up during public comments.
So the public comment portion, from my understanding and the tradition here, is that you can come up and speak on anything that you want, and I'm mad about this or happy about that, and generally, the person just gets up and makes a statement, and there's no interaction with the council. That's generally what you do. The goal of that is that you give the person opportunity to public, but you don't, because it's not, it's a non-agenda item that most people wouldn't expect that, no one knows it's coming, so you just don't want to get into a big dialogue with the person or start making decisions based upon that public comment. You can certainly say, I acknowledge your complaint, we'll get back to you, those kind of things, but there really shouldn't be a long interaction between this council and the person in the public who's raising the concern, because that would technically be a violation of the open meeting law as you get farther and farther into it. What I think the council president is trying to split the hairs is if it's on the agenda, however, he wants people to come up to be able to talk on any item on the agenda and have a dialogue on the agenda. And that really is, we could just write that into the rules, you know, and the council president at the beginning of a meeting, or add a portion in the agenda, say, does anyone else have a public comment on this? And they could come up. So that would be up to you, or the council, if they so choose. So you would kind of have this kind of open public comment.
With limits.
With limits, right. That would be up to you. I'm sure there are other, some items on the agenda that would garner more public comment than others, but you sure, the fear is, is that you don't want to get so into it that you can't get to the other agenda items. That's.
That's where the limits come in.
Well, I think that's where they would have to be, that we would have to have a designated time, you know, and we do, essentially.
Exactly.
So, and like I said, the public comments should only be agenda items anyways, so most of the things, I think that we would probably, or the community might be discussing, wouldn't go into a long conversation. If they felt like we did, we could just have them come back, you know, for public comments and then have the robust conversation at a subsequent meeting.
Mr. President?
Please.
So currently, the rule says three minutes, I think, is the limit. So we would have to decide, is that going to be three minutes? In total for the interaction? Or the three minutes just for the member of the public to speak? You know, we have to work that out. But I think also, and I have no problem with transparency and people speaking, but we also know that people can get up there, and some of us have done it, I've probably done it through the years, you can get up there and filibuster. And we want to avoid that. So I think part of the solution is timing. The other part is the council president, and I might donate one to him, because I see he doesn't have the gavel yet, so I think the council president needs to.
He'll have different gavels.
Control the meeting, and if someone is getting out of order, you know, you say, it's time to go to the next speaker, you know, so a combination of time and some Robert's rules of order and common sense, and not allow people to filibuster for 30 minutes on one issue, and we get bogged down and business doesn't get done. So I think you're on the right track, Mr. President, and we can work out a plan to allow the public to speak, and we just don't want to be blindsided. I know I get back to everyone who calls me or writes to me anyway, but we don't want to see a filibuster where business doesn't get done.
And I respect that. And thank you.
I bloody gavel.
And I have one also, because my wife has one. But I personally, with respect to the gavel, I just think, you know, as opposed to banging something here, I think I can get someone's attention. I don't think it's necessary for me actually to have a gavel or to get someone's attention when I want to, I can merely do that.
You're bigger than me.
Well, no, it's not about that. It's just, I just think that, you know, going forward, that, you know, just as long as people are respectful here and out there and realize the time that they have and they're respectful of the people who have to come after them to speak as well, and I think, you know, I don't want to sit here like we did in the past and actually time everyone, there's your three minutes, you've got 30 seconds left. I just want people to be conscientious of that, as opposed to constantly reminding the people, and in the event that people go 10 seconds over, that's perfectly fine. If they start to go 30, 45 seconds, then, you know, I can bring that to their attention. But, you know, even if we have this discussion in executive session and finalize it out here as to how exactly we want to go forward with this, I'm good with that as well. So I just want to keep it open enough, so.
Any decision about those kind of issues has to be done in public, so you can't have executive session on that issue. There's no, there would be no exception under the law for you to.
Okay. All right. So.
We're working on the changes that we've incorporated. We've left that open, because that's one of the open issues. I think I've got a little bit more clarification. And, you know, these rules are not. And these rules are not written in stone, they can be changed at any time as we go along, so if they become unworkable in the future, we can always go back and change them as the council sees fit. So we'll try to craft something together which we think mirrors your intent, and if they do, hopefully, we can go forward with them, if they don't, we can change them or table it for another time.
Thank you.
Any other further discussion? I don't at this point in time. Next item, Madam Quick.
Next item is a public hearing, an ordinance and amendment of the City of East Providence 2010-2015 Comprehensive Plan Update, Section 1, 2, and 3 of the 2010-2015 Comprehensive Plan.
I see Attorney Tom Moses here, speak on behalf of his client, please. Step up to the podium.
Mr. President, just a clarification and maybe for ease of time, I would actually open the public hearing on both, because they're related. So it's the comprehensive plan and the zoning ordinance change as well.
Okay. So we have a public hearing on both items here?
Both, yes.
Not just one item?
Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. President, may I proceed?
Please go.
My name is Tom Moses, I'm a principal in law firm. Oh, this is. Okay. My name is Tom Moses, I'm a principal in law firm, Moses Ryan of Providence, Rhode Island. I'm here representing Carpiato Group. This is regarding the redevelopment of the former Bennys site located at 2715 Pawtucket Avenue in East Providence. This matter was heard before your planning board, and they have submitted a recommendation for both the zone change and the comprehensive plan change. I think it's the clerk has received those. The proposed development would provide for a 7,475 square foot, one-story commercial retail building with also a walk-up ATM of only 26 square feet with 28 parking spaces. The current comprehensive plan provides that the land use designation is low-density residential. Even though this property has been used for commercial uses and retail uses for decades, we're proposing that it be changed to mixed use. There are other mixed-use properties along the Pawtucket Avenue area. We also have obtained DPR conditional approval on January 9th, and the plans have been modified. At the planning board meeting, my client agreed to add a sidewalk on Vineyard Side, which was not previously a sidewalk. Also, we're going to attempt to create more landscaping, abutting our neighbor, and we're going to, we've asked our engineer, our civil engineer, Garofalo Associates, to meet with them to approve the landscaping and additional off of the landscape on their side of their property, if they would like that. As to the zone change, the zone change would be from residential four, which is one family, two-family, to C3 commercial, general retail business. There are conditions on that general retail business, that there would be no check-cashing facility or no tattoo parlor in perpetuity, and we've agreed to that. I'd also would like to say that we had a very positive experience dealing with your planning staff, specifically Diane Feathers and Wayne Barnes, and I just, you know, enough is not said for our good public officials that work hard for the York community, so I thought I'd take to give Diane a little plug. Well deserved. We have a planning and land use consultant, and it's in your package that you received, I think from the clerk, Mr. Lombardo's resume as to the comprehensive plan amendments. Mr. Lombardo is here to answer any questions the council may have. And I'd be happy to walk you through the development plan. If you, in your package that you received are the plans that are over there, I'd be happy to walk you through them if any of the council members need to see them. There are specifics in the zone change request dealing with relief from setbacks, release from required buffering, relief from minimum distance between walls, and increase the maximum improvable surface coverage from 80% to 86%, reducing the parking requirements from 39 spaces to 28 spaces, and a clarification that the bank ATM is allowed use. I also would like to apologize for my client, Mr. Coats. He would have very much liked to have been here to present this himself, however, he is in Connecticut on another project for the company, so it was a conflict, we skipped. Can you answer any questions you may have?
Attorney Moses, I have a question, and I apologize, because I've had some notes with me early on, I left them in my car along with my phone, however, they're still stuck in my head. But with respect to the buffer zone in the back area, on the plans, it indicates that it's a five-foot buffer zone.
That's correct.
There was somewhere along the lines in your executive summary that, or on the drawing, if I'm not mistaken.
Yep.
It measured the dimensions of 15 feet by 55 feet.
Yes, but that also includes the area by which the dumpster is. So there's a dumpster pathway in there. That's what that dimension included.
Okay.
So the actual, the actual buffer, landscape buffer, would be fencing as well as, it's about five feet, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, okay, that's what I have, five feet. Now, when you say dumpster.
Yep.
What I gathered from being at the meeting, that there's not going to be an actual dumpster, there are going to be roll-out canisters?
Yeah, it's a roll-out cart, yes.
No different than what we use for residential, they have.
I think they're larger than that, but they are, they're called rollerways, so they literally are pushed out to the curb, so the trucks don't back into the.
Okay, so you don't have.
No, you don't have a massive dumpster, no.
Companies coming in early in the morning and, okay. My other question that I have is, part of the C3 you list is going to be retail space.
Yes.
Industrial was one of the other usage as well.
Yeah, we will not, we're perfectly fine if.
No, I'm just asking the question, what would be the definition of industrial?
No, we're not asking for industrial, only C3, so we don't want, we're not asking for industrial uses.
Okay.
On this site. You know, candidly, if our tenant isn't successful in the future, you know, we may want to use the building as an office building, maybe a medical office building, something, a neighborhood retail or neighborhood commercial uses, that's all we're looking to do here.
And I don't know if you know, there was a tattoo parlor, or probably still is, one, what, next, within a block or two from this location.
No, we have no problem with no tattoo parlors on this site or check-cashing.
It's open for the, any questions or concerns?
I think those of us that know the former Bennys building, and those of us like myself who still lament its loss, also know that the building was in tough shape. If you walked through that floor, and the manager would show me all the time, the floor was lifting, some of the blocks were separating. Outside of Missing Bennys, the building was tired. I support what Carpiato has been doing. What they're doing on Newport Avenue is a great usage of mixed use. It's a time that has come, and it should come to East Providence more. It's been very successful in other communities. Mr. Coats has done a great job. I appreciate that he couldn't be here tonight, but he's certainly been very amenable to projects in East Providence, and this is a no-brainer for me to approve of this and support this project, if we're going to be business-friendly, if we're going to change and get into more mixed-use zoning, which is critical. All we have is choice. We can leave another empty eyesore in our city. So I'm very satisfied. I think Mr. President has asked some good questions, and I know other council members may have, and I have reached out to Mr. Coats in the past, and I've been very satisfied with the company's projects, and it's this, which looks like a great project for the center of East Providence, which that part of Kent Heights is, a lot of people talk about this being the center, but geographically on a map, that's the center of our city, and I think this is a great use for a tired building, and it looks like some good landscaping, and it's a win-win for East Providence, and it has my strong support.
Thank you, Councilman, and just for clarification, I am in favor of this project as well, like you. I just wanted some clarifications on some questions that I have regarding, with respect to the drawing and the layout. Again, I mean, it's a company who's investing in the city. As Councilman Rodrick said, alluded to with respect to the project on Newport Avenue, 22 acres of land of development over there, and in addition to that, on Wampanoah Trail with some residential building over there as well, so they're investing heavily in the city. And this, again, is, it is an eyesore. I don't know, most of you drive to and from or pass this location and just take a look at the pictures. If you haven't, you're more than welcome to have, take a look at one of these here. I mean, they're literally knocking this building down and putting up a new one, so I think on behalf of myself, I could say, and I don't want to speak for anyone else at this point in time, with the exception of.
If I may, I would like to ask.
Councilman Rodrick, that he's in favor of it, but.
I would like to ask Diane Feather, if she can come up. I just have a couple of questions for her.
Before she comes up, can I just ask Ms. Thomas a question? In respects to loading docks, I know that was one of the discussions during the meeting that was, you know, concerned, questioning, can you, because I wasn't able to attend that portion of the meeting, can you just provide the council with the information regarding the?
Yes. We originally had loading on the side of the building on Vineyard. We had a comment that came through the DPR process and from the solicitor, that it's not appropriate that be loading on the sidewalk, which is what the original plan was. The plan has now been changed, loading will be through the front of the door of the building at off-hours, that means time when the business is not open and operating. So that's what will be loading, and there's a plan in your package that it shows you the loading.
I did see that, and I was just, because it would be directly in.
Right in front of the building.
Right, I was concerned, is that hours of operation, however.
No, it's specific to identify.
Offered, okay, perfect, good, thank you.
So before we ask, let's have that have come up, we have any questions for?
I do, if I may.
Attorney Moses, please.
And I thank you for the blown-up plan, because it was difficult to see that in, you know, email. First, as you know, Kent Heights School is across the street, and I know that we currently, on the Bennys property, we currently have no sidewalk, there's no curbing there.
That's right.
If I understand the plans correctly, the plan is to put sidewalk along Pawtucket Avenue and curb as well.
That's correct.
And I'm concerned, because, you know, the reorientation of the parking has the parking going directly toward Pawtucket Avenue. So that would provide, to me, sufficient barrier protection for. And can we confirm that the crosswalk that's right near the corner of Unity Ave, where there's that one part that's currently paved, Pawtucket Ave and Unity, it's like a 90-degree kind of angle, where there's a little bit of sidewalk and crosswalk going across to Kent Heights, that sidewalk, and I believe that's where, about where you want to put the, or where the developer wants to put the ATM.
Yep.
That piece of sidewalk and that crosswalk wouldn't be impacted by this project.
It will not.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilman.
So just for the record, just to full circle on what Councilman Kahoon said, there'll be a new sidewalk on the Pawtucket Ave.
That's correct.
And on the Vineyard Ave.
That's correct.
That's correct.
Location, both, okay.
I could just add, so this sidewalk on Pawtucket Ave was a concern raised at the planning board level by, I believe, a resident and members of the planning board. The applicant agreed to amend his application to include that sidewalk, so I'll talk to Ms. Feathers when she comes up here, but I just want to make sure that that was actually amended, and I believe that any approval should be contingent upon compliance with the plans that have been submitted, and that would include the sidewalk.
I would like to bring up one more thing, and I just doing a little bit of research, you know, on the store, on the Dollar General store, that's on the Newport Avenue location, peak hours of that store are right around the same time that kids will be going to and from school, about, you know, nine in the morning, about three in the afternoon. So we as a city might want, I know we currently have a crossing guard, but we might want to just keep an eye on that, just to make sure, you know, if there's traffic coming in and out of that one entrance on Pawtucket Ave, we've got enough in place to make sure that kids get back and forth.
The one thing I would tell you is that the, there was a, essentially Pawtucket Ave was an entire curb cut.
Right.
That was before, that's being eliminated, and you'll have a safe sidewalk and curbing on Pawtucket Avenue, which I think is very important.
Yeah, I'm thrilled to see that, that's excellent.
Any other further questions for Attorney Moses at this time, before we call up Ms. Feather?
Mr. President, one other question I know that came up by one of the council members, was why we're amending the comprehensive plan and the zoning at the same time, and just, I want to, so the record's clear, state law requires that when there is a change of a zone, that that zone change be consistent with the comprehensive plan. As Attorney Moses already said, I believe that the comprehensive plan zones this area as a multifamily residential.
That's correct.
So if we were to just grant this zone change without amending the comprehensive plan, we wouldn't be able to do that, it would be illegal, and it would be considered inconsistent with the zoning plan, and upon a challenge, the change of the zone could be voided. So the state law allows the city to change the comprehensive plan four times a year, I guess we would use up one of our changes this year by doing this, but we have to change the comprehensive plan to reflect the change of the zone here, that's why we're doing it.
So to that end, Ms. Marcello, is there a reason why our current, is our current comprehensive plan for 2010 through 2015, do those years have any meaning, is there an updated or a plan update? Because the resolution is to, you know, change the comprehensive plan from 10 to 15.
I think that's just the date of the plan that's currently in effect, and we can, the planning director can answer that more specifically than I do, but they're just referring to the plan. Generally, comprehensive plans have to be updated every 10 years, so I think that's just the title of the comprehensive plan that happens to be in existence right now within the city.
So is that something we need to vote on?
No, well, you'll be voting on the comprehensive plan, that's why you have A and B tonight, but you have to do the comprehensive plan first, before you can do the zoning, you can't do the other way around.
Right.
Okay. Thank you, Attorney Moses.
Thank you.
Ms. Feather, you mind coming up to the podium?
Do you have to go make sure that sidewalk isn't there?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So I just have a question, we have, we got the, we received the package about a week ago, but there's a lot of information in here, so.
Yes.
I want to ask the experts that have the best interest of the city in mind, do you see any issues with this plan moving forward, is there anything that may be an issue down the road?
We had some issues that we worked through negotiation with the developer in the city. We have a DPR committee that consists of myself as the chair, the fire chief, director of public works, we also bring in the zoning officer and a city solicitor in many cases, and so the developer presents the plans, involves landscaping, parking, building location, curb cuts, loading, trash location, so we look at all of that, and we look to see if they meet the standards, and if not, how, you know, how far away they are from meeting the standard, and perhaps, is there something else they could do that would be offsetting to that, perhaps providing more landscaping on one side if they were unable to do it on another location. Before we get the, off the sidewalk topic, I do want to say that they did agree to install a concrete sidewalk all along Pawtucket Avenue and along Vineyard, so not by tunniness, it would be concrete, and the granite curbing would be reset to a typical curb reveal, which is about six inches. And the loading area, I think if you look at the staff comments, there's some issues about that, but it's, you know, it is what it is, I mean, it was a Bennys, and they had a loading area. This building is a little further back than where the Bennys was located because of the parking that's going out in front of the building, so the loading area location becomes a little problematic, but I think they can work with Dollar General in terms of when they make the deliveries, and where in the site, you know, they park and make those deliveries. The first proposal to us was completely unacceptable, and that was to use the sidewalk on the Vineyard Avenue side of the property, so that the delivery truck would have gone up onto the sidewalk, and obviously, the truck would have extended into the road, and we just, all of us agreed, from the mayor down to, you know, everyone on the committee, that that was just completely unacceptable, we did not want people walking, especially in the school, walking out in the road around a truck that's making a delivery. So that was, that was one of the big concerns, but I don't know if that answered your questions, Councilman Marado?
Also, one more question, do neighboring the back on Vineyard, any complaints or any, have they been reached out to as far as, you know, the proximity of this building now being close with that property line? I mean, it is within the legal limits as to the variance, is very correct, but any thoughts from them as to?
We did send out notification to every property owner within a 200-foot radius of the perimeter of the property. We had no phone calls, no emails, no one at the counter, and then the night of the planning board meeting, which was Monday, February 11th, we had two residents come and express some concern about impact of a retail location on Vineyard Avenue, and that was the first we had heard of any concern, so they did express their concerns, the developer was there, staff was there, we heard their concerns. I don't know if there's anyone here that wants to speak when you do open it up to the public during the public hearing, but we really didn't have, we didn't really have any input, you know, from the budding neighbors on this. Obviously, we're going to try to do the best we can to buffer those properties, to put as much vegetation as we can on the properties, and, you know, work out the loading situation so that doesn't impact the budding properties, but other than that, I agree with, you know, Councilman Rodrick, I think it's an opportunity now to take this building and this piece of land and to, you know, redevelop it now when we have this opportunity. If we were to pass this by, I don't know when the next opportunity would come around, so I think, you know, given what was there, and it, you know, I don't know if anyone knows this, but Bennys actually has a Wikipedia page, that's what I found out when I was researching this, and I think that particular location, Pawtucket Avenue, Vineyard and Unity, was actually probably the second Bennys.
Twenty-nine.
Dating back to like 1927 or 1929. I won't tell you that it was the same building that's there right now, but, you know, we probably made additions, or perhaps even did a demolition at some point, but there's been a Bennys there, retail use there since like 1930, so. I also wanted to say, I wasn't sure if Attorney Moses made this clear to the council, but we're pleased with the exterior appearance of the building. They're actually proposing not to do the typical Dollar General appearance, but instead to do a red brick-like veneer to the building, so that I think it has that same sort of earth-tone quality that Kent Heights School has, and you may, yeah, there's the ending right there. So I think the appearance is much like the Bennys was in terms of the red brick, it's not that typical stark, you know, color you might see with a white Dollar General. I can't tell you that the sign is going to be as attractive as the building, but I certainly think that they've, they've done a great deal to make that building attractive, and to make it fit in with the surrounding land use system.
Any other further questions for Ms. Feather while she's up here?
Thank you.
Okay. So, thank you.
That's it? Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing, so anyone wishing to approach the podium and speak for or against this, please step up to the podium. I'm going to say this, repeat myself three times, and then I'm going to close the public hearing. Anybody wishing to speak for or against this project, please step up to the podium. Anyone here willing to speak for or against this project, please step forward. With that being said, there's no one here to speak for or against, I'd like to close the public hearing aspect of this, and let's proceed, please.
Mr. President, I'd like to move to approve the ordinance and amendment of the City of East Providence 2010-2015 comprehensive plan update.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve the 2010 through 2015 comprehensive plan by Councilman Cahoon, would anyone like to second that?
Mr. President, I would wholeheartedly second Councilman Cahoon's motion.
Okay, and we have a second on the floor by Councilman Rodrick. Madam Clerk, can we take a roll call vote on this, please?
Yes. Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Marado.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
And Council President Britto.
Aye.
Next item, please.
I believe you have.
So, Mr. Chairman, Mr. President, sorry, I'm going back to school committee days. Mr. President, I'd like to move to approve the ordinance and amendment of Chapter 19 of the Revised Ordances of the City of East Providence, Rhode Island, 1998, amended entitled "Zoning."
Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Councilman Cahoon to amend Chapter 19 of the revised ordinance for the City of East Providence, Rhode Island, 1998, amended entitled "Zoning." Would anyone like to second that motion?
I'll second that.
All right, we have a second by Councilman Marado. Madam Clerk, please, roll call vote.
Yes. Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Marado.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
And Council President Britto.
Aye.
Now, Mr. President, maybe Councilman Cahoon could work on Kent Heights Choir to come up with a Dollar General song now to replace the Bennys Bennys, so is that a project you could?
I think it's outside my purview, but I don't see if Mr. Temple's willing to take on something like that.
We'll ask.
Attorney Moses, thank you for sharing this with us this evening and explaining it into detail, we appreciate that your developer is coming into the city once again to develop some property here, investing in the city. Thank you.
Mr. President, and Mr. Council, thank you very much, it's been a pleasure working in your community, and we hope to do a lot better.
We hope so, thank you.
Spread the word.
With that being said, next, on the business, please.
Okay, we're on new business, reports of other city officials. The first item is Claims Committee Report, Solicitor Michael Marcello.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, the Claims Committee met at 6:30 in executive session, and please report the following action taken during that executive session. The new claim of Ms. Heather Gardner was tabled for more information. Claim of Michelle Giswaldi, with an amount of $124.55, was approved unanimously by the Claims Committee of the City Council. Claim of Darren Lopes, with the amount of $550, was tabled for more information. The claim of William C., is it Maya?
Maya.
$600 was passed unanimously. Claim of Raymond Mancini, an amount of $45, was denied unanimously, and the claim of Ricky and Gabrielle Silva was referred to the city's insurer, the Rhode Island Local Trust, for handling, and that was unanimous as well. On the sewer charge abatements, the abatement of sought-for by suit Joseph and Louisanne Clifford was tabled for more information. The claim of Mr. David Gervais was denied, the claim of Ms., unanimously, excuse me, the claim of Kimberly Rodriguez was denied as well, along with the claim of Mr. Gilasmat also denied. The claim of Madre Mazica was also denied. The claim of Gail Ho, excuse me, the abatement of Gail Ho was tabled for more information. The claim of Julie Bailey was approved. The claim of Alfred C. Mello was tabled for more information from the Water Department. Claim of William, the abatement of William Looney was denied, and the claim of Maria Borges was approved.
So we as a council actually were able to get these all, and come out here a few minutes after the hour, so now we don't have to go back into executive session and reconvene, so with that being said, would anyone like to make a motion to approve the claims from the city solicitor?
I'll make a motion to approve the claims.
I'll second that.
Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Yes. Councilman Cahoon.
Who's the reporter?
Approve the report from the Claims Committee.
Approve the report from the Claims Committee.
Thank you. Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Marado.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
And Council President Britto.
Aye.
Thank you, Councilman, for moving swiftly on this.
Just quickly, I wanted to just check with the solicitor, would it be appropriate to move to seal the minutes from executive session at this time?
Yes, you could, yes, you can.
So, Mr. President, I'll make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to seal the minutes from executive session by Councilman Cahoon, would anyone like to second that motion?
We'll second that motion.
We have a second from Councilwoman Souza, roll call vote, please.
Okay. Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Marado.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
And Council President Britto.
Aye. Next item, please.
Resolutions, resolution authorizing the mayor to execute the services agreement for rescue billing services for the City of East Providence, presented by Council President Britto.
With this resolution, I'm going to ask the fire chief to come up and approach the podium and talk, give some insight on this resolution to the public and to the council members as to what this stands for, where we stand, and where we intend on moving forward with this, in the event that the. Good evenings.
Chief. Morning, Mike. Back in August, I was asked to work with the city to put an RFP out for the service of rescue billing, and we hadn't, we hadn't done this from, last time this went out to bid was in 2012, and the services of the Dawson Group were secured from January 1, 2012, through October 31, 2014. After that, we put it out for bid again, and once we get the vendors, the city, the city council then, I don't believe, took action on it, so we continue to utilize the Dawson Group with their services. August of 2018, we again put it out for bid, and we received 10 vendors that submitted proposals. The only difference with the RFP this year, or last year, was we added the category of hazmat billing, because what we found out was that insurance companies were subrogating claims relative to auto accidents and hazmat incidents, and the city wasn't recouping some of the money for ancillary equipment and the items that we were using at our expense. So we've asked that the vendors also included hazmat billing, which we've started billing for ours and the use of the department vehicles, and we'll be able to recoup some of that money. So. So with that, how this RFP went down was we had approximately six categories that we utilized in a matrix that we used when the Budget Commission was here, and we did a little bit more to it. But the matrix has approximately six items, that within those six items, there are subcategories. We then, we would attain a score for each category. Some areas would get two points, some areas would get one point, some areas would get zero points. Then we took each category and gave it a percentage of weight that would go towards the total score. Because what we didn't want to do is because someone would come in with a certain percentage that was lower than the others, there may be a category where they were less functioning than the others. So this, we felt, was a cumulative score that would cover all the services at basis that would be best for the city. So with that being said, after we received the bids and we reviewed all of the scores, we made a recommendation to the former city manager to retain the services of the Dawson Group. And then time went on, and then we had the mayoral election, and then we decided to hold off for this body and the new council and the mayor to move this forward. It should also be noted that the Dawson Group is the owner of the companies, not only a Rhode Island resident, but the business is located right here in the City of East Providence on Roanoke Trail. I do have, I've got two letters that I believe were included in your packet, that there are two municipalities in the state that went from a company that bid on this, and then they moved to the Dawson Group and increased their revenue from year one. The City of East Providence, since moving to the Dawson Group, has really generated more income and revenue for the city. We probably collect on an average of approximately 26% of what we bill out. Last year, I believe, we collected $2.4 million to rescue billing. Now, question that someone will ask is, well, where does this money come from? When the rescue goes out, whether it be a city resident, mutual aid, when the rescue, emergency rescue vehicles go out, we transport patients to the hospital, we bill the third-party billing or their insurance company. If the patient is from the city, and whatever balance that is due, we still may send a bill, but we don't collect the fee. This city does not balance bill. There are other municipalities that whatever the insurance company does not cover, they will go after the remaining balance. East Providence doesn't do that. If you're not from the city and your insurance company does not cover the full cost, then we move for collection, and the Dawson Group will put them on a payment schedule. But in the event that the patient or party that got transported does not pay, then we move to a collection agency, and we go to court for full collection.
So Chief, can you just elaborate more with respect to the billing for East Providence residents on rescue? Because there was a constituent of mine who, once, who had mentioned about being charged by the city.
There was.
And after further reviewing my discussion with her about that billing, if my memory serves me correctly, it had everything to do with her deductible. So residents also responsible for the deductible with the billing for rescue? So for rescue, right to my house?
I think what may have happened with that is the Dawson Group, and this is, this is why our revenue has increased so greatly with the Dawson Group. What we have found out is that insurance companies will subrogate an accident, let's say. And they've collected money from that patient, and the patient has received that money, but really it's the city's money, a portion of that. So when the Dawson Group or the collection agency learns of that, now we go and try and collect the money that is due to the city. Because it didn't cost the patient, it cost the city. So we try and recoup that expense back to the city.
But the patient is billed for it.
The patient is billed for the money that the insurance company already paid them as a result of the accident, after the insurance company subrogated that claim. So we're not charging, we're not charging the city resident anything out of pocket. It's not costing them anything. If their insurance company, let's say they don't have insurance, and we transport a patient to the hospital and it, let's say, $2,300 transport fee, and they have no insurance company, we do not move for collection.
I've got a question.
I just, when you said the number, how much it would cost to transport somebody?
Oh, it's hypothetical.
No, I know, but I just, because everything in medical is inflated, and it's cheaper to take an Uber. If you don't have insurance...
To get a transport fee of $1,800 is not the ordinary.
No, no, I know, I'm just, you know...
And this is all on the city website and on the fire department?
After a while back, you discussed with me that one of your constituents paid, they never called us, but it moved me to put on our website that if you do receive a bill and you are a city resident, please call our office.
They don't distinguish that, like, this is not a bill? Is there any way, because I've gotten the same thing myself, questions about that, or my family...
I can, I can talk to the Dawson Group as far as if it is a city resident to maybe put some verbiage onto the bill that they're receiving so that they don't feel that they have to pay it. That's something that I can discuss with them. There may be a legality behind that, that they can't do it, I'm not sure.
So I know a question or concern that I had with a constituent in regards to our services is, you know, there are certain times of the day or year where things get busy, and a rescue within the city may be already at the hospital or on another call, and we have to call in a neighboring rescue to come. And then they get billed for that department. But if our policy is that our residents don't have to pay for a rescue within the city, and it's not their fault that there's not a rescue available, why are the residents paying?
They shouldn't. We usually have a reciprocal agreement with municipalities. I know for a while, years back, we had a problem with Providence as far as the billing process of it, but I haven't heard of any municipality that isn't reciprocal with us, because we do the same thing. If we have, our rescue goes to a municipality, and they'll call up and they'll ask us to, to void out the bill. I know the Dawson Group, we make a phone call to them, and I don't believe we've had a problem.
No, this one, this specific incident or situation is, it was a Seconk ambulance, so I don't know if there's a difference between, because it was mass, I mean, it still is a neighboring town or city, but...
I can advocate for them to call us.
Okay.
Call us up, and we will certainly, I mean, we get, as soon as we learn of it, we get right on it.
Yeah. Good.
I do have some, and I don't know that these are necessarily for Chief Almeida. And Chief, thanks for explaining, you know, the history and the RFP and everything like that. I think most of my questions have to do with the legal language of the contract, so I don't know. I mean, I guess you're welcome to hang out if you want, Chief, but I mean, so I mean, first of all, the term doesn't seem clear to me, the term of the contract. It says that it's gonna be for an initial term of three years and renewal terms of three years thereafter, but it doesn't specify how many renewal terms.
So I think it says one, right? Three, one three-year term, and then can be renewed for one term?
I didn't catch that. I think it says, I mean, if we could double-check that, I think it just says we'll automatically be renewed for three-year terms thereafter.
Yeah, that was a question I gave this morning.
Which I assume we don't mean to be in perpetuity.
It says, paragraph 5, disagreement shall continue for a period of three years, the initial term following the effective date. Following the expiration of the initial term, the term of disagreement shall automatically renew for an additional three-year term.
For an additional three-year term?
For, oh, excuse me, for additional three-year terms, you're right. It does say that, right?
Right, so that's, that's, I think we probably want to fix that.
We generally, my experience, my experience with the chief is that we're, he's on top of these things, and like, again, we sent this out for a request for proposal anyway, even though we could have renewed, because there's a benefit of that.
I'm glad that you did. I mean, I appreciate you guys taking the steps to do that, right, make sure we're getting the best...
And the, should we mention that the fee that the vendor came in with has been the fee from day one when they come into the city, and it's the same fee that every municipality that utilizes this company, it's the same flat fee. There's no negotiating from municipality or prorate in how many runs they're gonna get, so they can negotiate a lower fee because they're gonna get, they're gonna be able to collect from double the runs, so it's one fee and that's it.
So that's question number two, is, I mean, is that fee over a year, or is that fee per transaction, or how is that fee accounted?
That's the fee per collection, per incident, per bill that they send out. So, for instance, let's take January of 2019.
Yep.
We billed out $1 million, $1.1 million, and we received $250,773, which is 6% of what we billed out minus the adjustments that we make for the city. So it's 6% right across the board.
So what I'm trying to get to is, do we have an amount that we anticipate paying TDG in fees per year, per budget cycle, or...
Well, it would depend upon how many incidents we respond to, how many of those incidents involve city residents. There's a lot of factors that we can't, you can't pinpoint. We can't say that we're gonna collect $2.6 million, and we're gonna get 6% of that money, because 70% of those runs could originate right here in the city, and we're going to forego the fees for the city residents.
I'm concerned about the termination language in the contract. The termination talks about termination for default on the part of the city, but it doesn't address termination and default on the part of the vendor on TDG. I think we probably want something in the contract to talk about how we would address default on their behalf. Although I wonder if, you know, there's, there's even a scenario under which they can default based on what you just explained.
That's, I think that's the reason why it's not in this contract, because there would be, under no circumstances, how could they default unless they're out of business?
Yeah, if you refuse to send out bills, I guess, in which case they wouldn't get paid. So that answers that question. Indemnification question, I don't think we need to worry about. The one thing I do, I do want us to look at, Mike, going forward, and this doesn't have anything to do with chief or this particular contract, is there seems to be a discrepancy between the city's purchasing policy and the, either the charter, it is the charter. So the charter says that the mayor negotiates contracts on behalf of the city with the approval of the council at a certain threshold. Per the charter, that threshold is, I believe...
$50,000.
$50,000. Per the city's purchasing policy, it's $100,000, and that comes to the council. I think that's an easy fix. I think we just want to make sure we fix it on the city side.
The charter provision obviously trumps any policy.
For bail, yeah.
Councilman, I brought up, there's a couple other areas just last week that I brought to the chief of staff's attention, that it was contradictory to the way we do things now, so she was gonna clean that up.
Oh, excellent. All right, thanks. And yeah, and thanks for your feedback, Chief, when we were talking about this, you know, back a couple months ago. I appreciate your help.
Mr. President, please.
Chief, a question, one question. What is an example of a non-resident service? Is that mostly vehicle, accident?
A patient from another municipality doing business here in the city, could be an auto accident, they could be shopping here in the city, they could be at a family's, a family house, residents in the city, could be any person that does not live in this city.
Okay. Thank you. Any further questions for the chief? So we want to make amendment to this?
Can we move to approve, I mean, simply, and say, let's just change that, you know, you know, with the renewal terms, right, a renewal term?
Yeah, we can make that change.
Yeah.
I mean, would it have to be agreeable upon the vendor as well?
Of course, of course.
Subject to the agreement of the vendor, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So it'll be a renewal of, term of, initial term of six years with one renewal of three years?
Okay.
And one other thing, this money collected goes right to the city treasury. Years ago, the fire department, it would be put in an account to replace emergency vehicles, and now all of this entire money collected goes right into the city treasury.
Got it. So Mr. City Solicitor, would a vote on this today? Would the vote have to include the amendment?
I understand the amendment, so I think the clerk has it down, so I'll, I'll just amend the contract and send it back for the signatures. Obviously, it wouldn't become valid unless they sign it as well.
So the next meeting, you could report on this?
I will.
Okay, very good.
We can't sign that up until we get the...
Any further questions at this point in time?
So we can vote tonight? Yeah.
I move to approve the contract as discussed with the amendments to the term.
So we have a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Souza. Anyone like to second that? Seconded by Councilman Cahoon. Roll call vote, please.
Councilman Cahoon?
Aye.
Councilman Morado?
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick?
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza?
Aye.
And Council President Britto?
Aye. Thank you.
Next item, please.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief. Any explanation?
Resolution requesting RIDOT to reject proposed cuts to transportation alternatives program presented by Councilman Cahoon.
So, pursuant to what the gentleman, Peter, I believe, was speaking to earlier, you know, and I was tipped off by another resident about this change. So basically, RIDOT is proposing major Amendment 11 to their transportation improvement program, which essentially will remove over the period of 10 years, approximately $28 million from, you know, foot and bike path improvement efforts, you know, such as the East Bay Bike Path, such as the 10 Mile Greenway Expansion Effort, et cetera, et cetera, so as to fund other prioritized efforts. You know, I think we know what's been going on with roadworks, construction is expensive, et cetera, et cetera. But what I've put together here for the council's consideration tonight is a resolution to ask RIDOT to reconsider and to not make that amendment. This resolution is based in part on language by a recent resolution that was passed by the Portsmouth Town Council. Obviously, theirs is specific to Portsmouth stuff, but I did look into that and see how they went about it before I put this before your consideration or approval tonight. Oh, and I would like to say that there are two meetings coming up, as Peter pointed out. One is on the 25th of February at the Narragansett, at Narragansett Town Hall in their council chambers, public meeting on this very item. The second is on the 28th at the DOA Building, 1 Smith Street, right across the street from the State House. I believe that one is at 4:00 PM.
Any further discussion on this item?
As far as I support that resolution.
Thank you, Councilman Morado.
The bike path is very vital to what we're trying to accomplish in Riverside, and it's one of the main support of our businesses, especially in the spring and summer months, so completely support this resolution.
Mr. President, please. Councilman, would this be in the form of a letter to RIDOT?
So this is a resolution that the council will sign off, and then we can, yeah, we can send it to RIDOT and say, hey, please reconsider. This is what City Council of East Providence thinks.
Right. And I just wanted to, you know, kind of reiterate, I too agree, this is something that I think the communities throughout the state should get behind, and I'm glad that we are putting it forward. As Mr. Councilman Morado mentioned, the bike path goes from the beginning of the city and goes all the way through, and I know with our waterfront development coming down, the park at, you know, around Kettle Point, and then over here near Takwanton, we're looking to build that bike path up and connect it to the east side with the Red Bridge. So taking any money away or funds away would definitely negatively impact our desires for our plans with bike path and pedestrians, and we do a lot of these 5Ks through the city too. And so I think it's really important, though, roads are important in the reconstruction and the repairs throughout the state, so are our pedestrian transportation roads also. It's not just the vehicles, but those who ride and walk throughout our communities are just as important. So I don't think it's a good area to take away from. So, thank you, Councilman Cahoon, for bringing this to the table, and I wholeheartedly support it, too.
Likewise. And if you prefer to sign this resolution or have the entire council sign it, whichever you prefer deemed necessary, I think you have the backing from all of us, so...
I'll defer to the solicitor, if that's okay. I'm happy to put my name on.
I think you have a sponsor. If the other council members want to sponsor, they can actually add their names, but I believe it has to be signed by... But I believe it has to be signed by the council president.
Well, if it does, then I prefer that we all sign it.
That's fine.
If that's the case.
Okay. One more thing, just quickly. I'd like to acknowledge the town clerk in Portsmouth, named Jennifer West. She was very helpful in bringing this information.
And in addition to that resolution, if we can note that councilmen, on behalf of Councilman Cahoon, so they know where it's coming from, exactly where it's coming from. Any further discussion?
Make a motion to approve resolution.
We have a motion on the floor.
Seconded.
Approve the resolution by Councilwoman Souza, seconded by Councilman Morado. Roll call, vote. Madam Clerk?
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morado.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodericks.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
And Council President Britto.
Aye. Next item, please.
Resolution authorizing the mayor to pay invoices subject to school committee approval for pre-construction expenses for the new East Providence High School, presented by Councilman Cahoon.
Yeah, so this resolution, I worked with both city solicitor Marcelo and city clerk Sam Burnett to come up with an appropriate or the exact value for pending invoices for services that have been incurred by the various agents that have been employed on the city on behalf of the new high school effort. Specifically, to date, since November, since the bond passed, we have contracted for services with AI3, who's the architect who's designing the high school. We have contracted for services with the owner's program manager or project manager. That is the Peregrine Group, right here in East Providence. And they haven't gotten paid. And they acknowledge that, you know, this is a project that's starting up. They acknowledge that it's subject to bond funding. But really, until the bond proceeds start to come in, the city is on the hook to fund their efforts, you know, until, until we start to see that funding. So at its heart, what this invoice is asking to do, or what this resolution is asking to do, is to pay the invoices, the city to pay the invoices for AI3 and Peregrine for the months of, services rendered in the months of November 18, December of 18, January of 2019. Just so everybody knows, the invoices have been vetted. The OPM is specifically contracted to vet the invoices submitted by both our construction manager, who hasn't submitted an invoice yet, and the architect. That's their job. They then bring those to the building committee, and the building committee vets those. And then they go to the school committee, and the school committee vets those, too. So before these have gotten to the city council, they've really had three levels of review. So the number that's, the amount that's in the resolution, I'm sorry, I don't have it directly in front of me, about $1.6 million, I'll read you the exact number. The idea is the city would outlay those funds in advance of receipt of bond funding. I know you're probably going to ask me when bond funds are going to start to roll in. I can't give you an exact date. I think we're still trying to work that out with the state, because the state has taken their own bonds. Indications are that it could be anywhere between April and June. That's the best information that I can provide to you right now. But what I can tell you is that as that information rolls in, I'm sure the superintendent will be sharing it with the city, and I'll share it with you as well.
So Malcolm, would you mind coming up for just a quick question? So have we gone out and bonded for the funds for the school yet?
No. And we've had a couple of discussions with the financial advisors on this. And there have been a couple of scenarios. The first one, a few months ago, was we were looking at maybe doing two bonds. And the last scenario, when we met, we talked about doing one bond. But in the interim, we would do short-term borrowing, bond anticipation notes, known as bands. And so we talked about doing approximately $20 million sometime about mid-April. But again, that's preliminary, where we're trying to get the cash flows together to see. So when we talked about it, it was maybe doing two or three bonds. What you don't, if you borrow the whole 198, you're going to start paying interest from day one. So, and it's going to be three year, more years to finish it. So why pay interest if you don't have to? So we'll borrow with smaller increments and then go out for one large bond, is the premise right now?
If I may add one piece of information I failed to explain. Associated with this whole state initiative, as we've talked about before, is the state is reimbursing or providing us a significant proportion of that construction cost. Along with that comes upfront money from the state that will be allocated in an allotment yet to be determined on a schedule yet to be determined. I think the initial, Craig, just give me a nod. I think the initial allotment we were looking for was on the realm of, in the area of $10 million in the first, and then that would be in that April to, right? So that would be the state's outlay to the city, specifically to fund construction costs associated with this project. So what, oh, go ahead, Councilman.
Sorry, I was going to say, have we found out, since the bond has passed on the state level, what are potential initial additional funds that we're getting on top of the 55%?
So you're asking about the incentive on top?
The incentive, right.
No, the incentive, the incentive is still being worked out on the state, on the state side. As you know, the state took out a $250 million or got a $250 million approved, bond approved, which they're still in the process of bonding. However, what I can tell you is what we designed into our stage one and stage two packages was a plan to capture incentives far in advance of what we could ever capture, right? So we are limited. We get 54, 54-point-something percent, 54.5% just based on the fact that we are the city of East Providence, and that's our state housing aid reimbursement rate. We may capture up to an additional 20% or essentially 75% of the approved cost, so long as the state improves all of our, right, design incentives. And we put in design incentives that far exceed 20%, if you catch what I'm getting, right? I mean, if we could get 30%, 40%, we can't. But we are still waiting for exactly what that incentive amount is going to be.
So we're looking to up to 20, but they have not determined yet which, what we're, if we're getting 20 or 10?
That's correct.
Okay, okay. And we don't know, we don't have a good timeline as to when we would find that out either?
We do not. What I can tell you is that the school department is talking with all the particulars every day. I know that Mr. Amore is engaging on our behalf to try to work this all out. But the state is on new ground as well. So as we have information, I will forward it along. Speaking on behalf of timelines, Malcolm, do we have a timeline as to disbowering for this money? Because if I'm not mistaken, this, these invoices are going back to November? They started in November, yes. Started in November, so, and they, and no one's been paid? They have not been, this will be the first outlay of expenditure for services rendered for these providers. So what is, what is the timeline in receiving or going out to borrow this money to get these vendors paid?
Well, with this one, the 1.6, this would just come out of the current cash that's available with, with the city. And so we're, right now, we're borrowing TANs, and we're hopefully going to get the money in for that the second or third week of March. That'll be 17.5 million. And, and then that should take us through, so we shouldn't have any other issues, I think, funding any of the schools' requests for the next few months. We get into, we get the TANs coming in the following month. We'll hopefully have the bands in. We may have some pre-funding by the state for another 10 million.
So we're covered? So we can get these invoices?
And so if this is approved tonight, we can have it paid within a week.
And if you're looking for that schedule of what the anticipated billings are going to be, certainly the school department has that. They have a cash flow sheet. I know they've been sharing that with Malcolm and the mayor. And I can get you access to what they're, essentially, the OPM bills, I believe it's about 31K per month, if I'm not mistaken. And that's, you know, that's, now that the architect fees are a little bit more substantial. The arc, the total architect fees are going to be on the order of about 15 million total once this job is done. And they're probably going to bill about 10% of that, or about 1.5 million, up until we get to the stage three package. So like I said, we can give you all the exact numbers. But just for you to kind of keep in your head, bills that we might have inbound until we get the state money and until we get the bond in place. And then architectural fees already built into the total amount, anyway, right? The 15 million? Oh, yes, right. So that total bond price that we came with, 189 million, that includes everything. That's the number we have to watch and make sure we don't go over.
So as we pass, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I was going to say, any other further questions?
So as we, as these invoices come in, I mean, are we doing it on a quarterly? Like, this seems to be three months. Or are we going to be looking to pay them on a monthly?
So I can, I can, I'm sorry, let me interrupt. The reason why this is before you is because we're taking money out of general revenues or wherever the finance director can find them. It's my intention, after looking at the passage of the bond and the legislation that went with it, once we actually get the bond money in and the, even maybe the bond anticipation notes in, the council is not going to have to approve it. It's going to be the school committee, the building committee, and then just the mayor's office. But because this is kind of an outlay from general revenue funds currently sitting in our budget right now that are unbudgeted, I felt it appropriate that we get council authority to pay this bill. But all, once, once the money starts rolling with all these other, there won't be council approval necessary, because the voters have already approved it. And just so you, a little about, about the dynamics, the mayor, the superintendent, Malcolm and I, and other people from the, our agent, builders' agent, we have, every three weeks, I think, we're meeting on a set Wednesday, going over everything that's been done over the past three weeks or four weeks, including bills. We go through them, determine if they should be paid, not been paid. So everyone, so not only the school department's in the loop, but also the city side is on the loop as to what's going on in that project. And then the mayor will be able to approve those bills absent council authority, because the money's already there. This happens to be charges that were incurred in November, December. And if we didn't take action now, the school department didn't have any money to pay, and they needed to get these paid, because we don't want to slow the project down. It's a little, it's a little, we're doing this a little backwards. The school department would have approved these, this outlay, but for the snow day that they had. They canceled their school committee meeting. That's why it's subject to school committee approval. But the procedure that I believe is the most appropriate is the building committee, school committee, and then the mayor's office, and the council, if needed, if we're taking monies out of general revenues that are unbudgeted.
So in addition to this, I think that it's important to note, if, because it's not written, but for the record, that once the bands come in or any of the bonds, that the city will be reimbursed, the 1.6.
The last we were asked, the city will reimburse for any outlay of funds from bond proceeds or bond anticipation notes. So of course, we need to get the money back. We just can't keep on loaning them.
And that language should be in the band or bond ordinance as well.
I think my one concern, Malcolm, going forward, and certainly, you know, I want to challenge the team that's working together to help put this in place. So the council is aware, you know, the city has also gone out for bid for a financial consultant specifically equipped and skilled to deal with this particular situation. So once they're on contract, and I understand that the proposal period closed last week, they'll be able to assist Malcolm, they'll be able to assist the solicitor and the mayor to kind of plan that, that route out. But it's going to be very important for us to be able to account for all of these complex transactions that are going on. And I know what we're asking to do tonight is not a simple thing. But it's going to be, you know, it's going to be crucially important for the city to be able to keep track of what's going out, what's coming in. Because certainly, this is going to be subject to audit, and there's going to have eyes on, you know, from the state, et cetera.
That's precisely why I asked for this resolution to be put on your agenda for approval, because, again, it's an outlay of general revenues to a bond project. And I want to record that we know what the amount is. We know the amount that we expect to get reimbursed, and that it has been approved by the appropriating authority of the city of East Providence.
And that's why you're the attorney.
Thank you.
And this will be set up like the other grants that we get on the school side, like the Title I, Title II grants you get. It will be completely separate. So the only thing that will show there will be the expenses. And then we could break that down as granular as you would like. We could have one line for 189, or we could break it down per, however we want to do it. But the only thing that will show up in there will be the expenses.
One thing for this, the council to consider, not really related to this, but as we go on, and it's something we've talked about in the past, there will have to be a tax rate adjustment that's associated specifically with the construction of the school, right? We've had some ideas and discussions about what that number's going to be. And really, that number is dependent upon ultimately what the state decides to outlay based on our requests. I, I think it's, I just want to put it out there for the council's consideration. I think one of the things that we're going to want to consider is how that money is going to come in, how we're going to assess that rate. Will that rate be a special assessment on top specifically for the schools to go away once, you know, the project is complete? I have my own thoughts on that, but I think that's probably more appropriate for a future discussion. Just kind of want you to be thinking about these things as we go forward.
Yeah, I think that you make a good point, and that's something that we probably should have a discussion sooner than later, since the new tax, you know, period will be starting, you know, in July, June, May, coming this summer. And will there be an impact, since we are already starting the process? So probably within the next couple of months, I think it'd be a nice, robust conversation.
So I'll take the action to put on the docket. As soon as we have our financial advisor on, on tap, we can bring those folks in, and they can kind of give us, you know, kind of the lay of the land on how this is going to go.
Mr. President, please. There's no other questions, I'd make a motion.
Okay, we have, okay. Any other, any further discussion or questions at this point in time? Okay, we have a
I would move that the city council approve this resolution to authorize the mayor of East Providence to pay the attached invoices for pre-construction of the high school bond issue up to and not to exceed the amount of $1,624,901.66.
So we have a motion on the floor by Councilman Rodericks to approve this resolution. Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
We have a second by Councilwoman Souza. Madam Clerk, roll call, vote, please.
Yes. Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morado.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodericks.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
And Council President Britto.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Malcolm. Proceeding to the last item on the docket this evening.
Okay. Resolution declaring March as colorectal cancer awareness month in East Providence. Council President Britto.
Okay. At the council's request, I'm going to just step up to the podium to read this. So just so everyone's aware, that this was brought to my attention by the mayor's office. And with that being said, we're looking to have a resolution declared as colorectal cancer awareness month in the city of East Providence for the month of February.
March.
Excuse me, March, I'm sorry. And this resolution reads, "State of the Land in Providence Plantation, City of East Providence, Resolution declaring March as colorectal cancer awareness month in East Providence. Whereas, colorectal center, excuse me, colorectal cancer is the second-leading cause of cancer deaths in the United States among men and women combined, but there is currently no cure. And whereas, 1 in 20 men and 1 in 24 women will be diagnosed with colorectal cancer in their families, excuse me, in their lifetime. And whereas, there are now more than 1 million survivors of colorectal cancer in the United States. And whereas, the national goal established by the National Colorectal Cancer Roundtable is 80% of Americans ages 50 and older be screened in every community. And whereas, if the majority of people in the United States ages 50 or older were screened regularly for colorectal cancer, half of all cases could be prevented entirely. Whereas, it's crucial that all people of all ages know the signs and symptoms of this disease. And whereas, De Bruyne University Endoscopy Center has pledged to do its part in preventing colorectal cancer by providing educational screening and treatment for this, for patients in the city of East Providence. And finally, for whereas, observing
And finally, for whereas, observing a colorectal cancer awareness month during the month of March will provide special opportunities to offer education and importance of early detection or screening. Now therefore, be it resolved in the City Council, City of East Providence hereby authorize the mayor of the City of East Providence to proclaim March 2019 as colorectal cancer awareness month." So with that being said, one of the things that I first came to my mind when this was brought to my attention, I mean, this is one of the leading causes of debt for African-Americans as well, for both men and women. So it is important to be screened. Ordinarily, you get screened through your annual physicals. There is no screening process that I know of and that I'm aware of that's held in conjunction with Brown University Medical in the City of East Providence. But I'm thinking that maybe the mayor's office should go a bit further and make it more aware to the people or the city, put it on the website if it isn't on the website, and if anybody has any questions or concerns regarding screening, that, you know, they should contact the ma, contact the mayor's office. Thank you.
Mr. President, that being said, I'd like to thank you for that thoughtful resolution, that thoughtful read, and I'd like to move to approve the resolution as ready.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion on the floor by Councilman Cahoon to approve the resolution, seconded by Councilwoman Souza. May we have a roll call vote before we conclude this meeting?
Yes. Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morado.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodericks.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
Council President Britto.
Aye. Before we adjourn this evening, I just want to, because it's not on a docket, would anyone like to make a motion before I follow up with what I'm about to say to adjourn, because it's not on the docket, and then we could just sit here for a couple of minutes? And I just want to recognize the chief for his retirement, that's all. But it isn't on the docket, so. We make a motion to adjourn. We make a motion. So we have a, anyone like?
Second.
We have a motion to adjourn, and seconded by Councilwoman Souza. Roll call vote, please.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye. Do you want to just recognize him before you adjourn?
Well, well, it's not on the docket, so I'm thinking that right after we could, you know.
I think with the council's permission, it's just that you could add, you can do it before.
Well, we got a motion already to adjourn, so roll call vote.
Okay.
Only because there's a motion to second it already.
Okay. So we have Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morado.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodericks.
Aye, but I'll stay around.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
And Council President Britto.
Aye. Essentially, all I wanted to do was just recognize the chief for his service for the City of East Providence for the 28-plus years that he put into the city. I just want to thank him for stepping up to the plate when necessary to become an acting city manager, and I just want to personally thank him for his services. I want to thank him for all the help that he did for the city. I just wanted to make sure that it did not go unknown to this council that we're not aware of his services, and just want to thank him, and I'm sure others want to express your, your thank you. Please, please do so. But I just want to thank the chief personally, while I had this opportunity to be up here for his services, and I wish him well with his retirement and that he gets to enjoy life more.
Yes.
Agreed.
Thank you, Chief Perella. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
I'm not roll calling.
Thank you. We don't have to go into executives.